Meeting of the Finance and Administration Committee to order. It's good to see everyone in person instead of on a screen. With your approval, we'll take the following items up for approval. Action item 1A is the approval of the minutes of the June 6, 2022 Committee on Fiscal Affairs meeting and the Committee on Faculty Staff and Administration meeting. We're doing both now. I'll move approval of action item 1A. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or any discussion on it? If there is none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the minutes are approved. Policy item B1 is a resolution to authorize spending plan for supplemental support under the American Rescue Plan. University applied for and received additional federal stimulus funds for the American Rescue Plan Act, also referred to as supplemental. Please bear with me, I'm having technological challenges here. Support under the American Rescue Plan. These funds were earmarked for colleges and universities based on five absolute priorities. Five of the university's community colleges, BMCC, BCC, Ostos, LaGuardia, and Queensborough, were awarded $11 million of institutional funds under the SSARP absolute priority for which focused on community colleges serving a high percentage of low-income students and experiencing enrollment decline. The colleges are planning to use the entire amount awarded to cover lost revenue and request the board to approve the planned use of those funds. Interim Vice Chancellor and CFO Christina Chappa is available to provide any further background and answer any questions as you may need. In the meantime, I'll move approval of policy item 1B. And may I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or are there any questions on this? Mr. Hennig.
So we have the five community colleges listed, but there are also other community colleges in CUNY such as Kingsborough who were also financially affected by all of the financial implications of the pandemic. So what about things such as Kingsborough receiving funding from the pandemic for higher education relief funds?
Christina?
Thanks for the question. They actually were not eligible under the criteria set forth by the federal government.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Are we ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Policy item B1 is passed unanimously. Item B2 is a resolution to approve planned use of $40 million in nonrecurring strategic funds. University received an allocation of $40 million in nonrecurring strategic funds as part of the 2023 New York State enhanced budget. University developed a plan which includes allocations that focus on enrollment and retention, streamlining transfers between colleges, online program development, academic excellence, career preparation, and the well-being of the university. Sorry, this is a... my screen is bothering me today. Well-being of the university's students and creating a modern data-driven university. CUNY will report on its progress on implementing the plan to the board on a biannual basis. The university is requesting the board to approve the university's plan for utilizing $40 million of nonrecurring state-funded strategic funds. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez is available to provide further background on this item and answer any questions as you may need and require. In the meantime, I'll move the item. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Professor Benton?
Yes, the faculty is supportive of this, but we do have a question about the market and gap analysis. Not the idea, but how is this going to be? What is the process of purchasing and how is the consultant to be selected?
Yeah, I can address that. What we do not currently... let me make sure everyone knows that piece of it to give a little bit of background.
For the purposes of the record, could you just identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, I'm EDC Hensel, and university provost. The part that you're referring to relates to the desire to look across all 25 campuses and identify where there is demand for new courses, new programs in various modalities. And that is done very piecemeal at the moment by different campuses at different times, but never holistically across all 25 campuses. So it's a major effort to identify a strategy for developing new programs that are responsive to market demand as opposed to waiting for them to grow organically. There is an RFP that will go out. It will, you know, as part of the standard procedure, from there, there will be a company that's awarded that. We have some relationships with different vendors that can perform it, and from there we will do that gap analysis across the campuses and share that with the campus.
Okay. That's a satisfactory answer to me.
Okay. Is there anything else? If there is none, nothing, are we ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item B2 is approved unanimously. Item B3 is a resolution to authorize an enterprise-wide service agreement contract with Gartner Incorporated for subscription-based technology research, consulting, and related services. University seeks approval to enter into a university-wide three-year contract utilizing New York State Office of General Services contract, PS 66085, beginning on February 1, 2023, and ending January 31, 2026, with Gartner for subscription-based research and related services for individual campuses to achieve cost and resource savings for an amount not to exceed $2,189,146. Vice Chancellor and University Chief Information Officer Seb Formoso is available to provide any further background on this or answer any questions as you may need. Are there any questions for Mr. Formoso? Professor Benton?
A quick one. Once again, we're supportive of this. Is the... there's a new committee that's been... a new subcommittee that's been created on technology planning? I know we're transitioning into it, but in the future, would they be seeing this kind of a contract?
I'm not sure because the committee has to be constituted... the subcommittee has to be constituted first, so I'm not certain of that. But in any case, this is the right place for procurements.
Sure.
Okay. So it's in the right place.
I'm not questioning the jurisdiction, but I was wondering about the future of that committee and the scope of its future role.
Well, you may recall the mission of the... and the charter of the committee and the subcommittees, so I'm sure we'll have further color on that.
Thank you.
As we move forward.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Does Vice Chancellor Formoso wish to add anything to it or even introduce himself to the subcommittee?
Good evening. My name is Seb Formoso. I am the Chief Information Officer of the university, and I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item B3 is approved unanimously. Thank you. Item B4 is a resolution to authorize enterprise-wide unified support contract with Microsoft Corporation. Microsoft will be replacing Premier with Microsoft Unified Support, and the university wishes to enter into a single contract for Unified that would serve computing and information services at all 25 schools. University seeks approval to enter into a university-wide three-year contract with Microsoft for Unified utilizing New York State OGS contract, PS 67930, and make expenditures and purchases not to exceed $2,413,360. Vice Chancellor and University CIO Seb Formoso is here to provide any further background on this item or answer any questions as you may require. In the meantime, I'll move this. Is there a second?
Second.
This item has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or any comments on it? Hearing none. We ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you. Item B4 is approved unanimously. Item B5 is a resolution to authorize a contract with New York State Industries for disabled for the provision of ongoing custodial and maintenance services at two leased buildings at Ostos Community College. Ostos Community College leases office spaces at 590 Exterior Street in the Bronx for CUNY Language Immersion Program and at 560 Exterior Street Bronx in the so-called Prowe Building. It looks like a boat. Bronx Terminal Market area and is responsible for providing ongoing custodial and maintenance services at these spaces. The college currently has a contract to provide custodial and maintenance services at these two locations and is set to expire on November 30, 2022. The college submitted a statement of work to procure a contract for janitorial carpet cleaning, floor maintenance, window cleaning, window blind cleaning services to NISID, a preferred source contractor, which subsequently... and subsequently secured pricing approval from New York State OGS. University seeking approval from the board to authorize a contract with NISID for a one-year term with up to four one-year renewal options for a total amount not to exceed Ostos Community College's Senior Vice President for Administration and Finance, Esther Rodriguez, Chadavoyn?
Yes.
Ah, okay. I want to make sure I pronounced it correctly. Is available to provide any further background on this or answer any questions as you may require. In the meantime, I'll move approval of item 5B. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments on item 5B? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Policy item 5... B.5 is approved unanimously. B.6 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Dreamland Security Services to provide unarmed guard services to New York City College of Technology. College requires unarmed guard service for its eight campus buildings. The college received approval from the university to hire additional campus peace officers and campus security agents to replace officers and agents who were separated from the college. Until these CPOs and CSAs are hired and retained, the college is seeking to supplement its campus police officer staff with temporary unarmed guard officers for fiscal year 2022 to 2023. College issued a competitive mini-bid utilizing New York State OGS, contract number PS 68261. Dreamland Security Services was the responsive and responsible bidder offering the lowest bid price in response to the solicitation, and this is New York State and New York City certified MWBE services provider. The college is seeking approval from the board to authorize a contract in the amount not to exceed $3,570,000 over a period of five years. New York City City Tech Vice President for Administration and Finance, Miguel Carroll, is available to provide further background on this item if you require. In the meantime, I'll move approval of policy item B6. May I have a second?
Second.
There is a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Hennig?
Yes, and the reasoning in the resolution, it states that the unarmed guards are for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, but in the resolution itself, it states that the contract is for $3,570,000 over a period of five years. So where does the contract over five years come from if we're only discussing the unarmed guards for 2022, 2023 fiscal year?
City Tech representative?
Yes, the contract was increased to that amount because of the inability to predict how long it would take to recruit, train, and make available regular CPOs and CSAs. So it doesn't mean we're going to spend all of the money, but, you know, it would give us the opportunity to bridge the gap between now and the time that we have our regular CPOs, CSAs, you know, as I said, recruited, trained, and made available to the college.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on this? Hearing none. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Policy item B6 is approved unanimously. Thank you. Item B7 is to authorize... I'm sorry, did someone... is to authorize a contract with Otis Elevator Company to provide elevator maintenance services at LaGuardia Community College. LaGuardia Community College must ensure that its campus elevators are maintained properly and meet operational standards for the health and safety of its students, faculty, and staff, and must hire a qualified contracted performance of elevator maintenance services. That includes all inspections, adjustments to test parts, replacement, and repairs necessary to keep the escalators... excuse me, fully functional. A solicitation was conducted utilizing OGS Contract Group 71004, and Otis Elevator Company was the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. University seeking approval from the board to authorize a contract with Otis in the amount not to exceed $840,000 for a period of five years. LaGuardia's Vice President for Administration, Shahir Efrain, is available to provide any further background on this or information as you may require. In the meantime, I'll move approval of item B7. All in favor? Oh, is there any comment or question?
Yes.
Professor Benton?
Was Otis the only bidder?
There were three responsive bidders.
Great. Terrific. In the past, we've had this problem of there being very limited bids on elevator maintenance.
Merely one of them with elevators.
Ah, okay. Well, anyway, this is very good.
Yeah, it is, actually. You're right. Anyone else? Okay. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Item B7 is approved unanimously. Item B8 is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance Administration Committee. Personnel Matters Report of the Finance Administration Committee contains nonfaculty-employee actions previously contained in the FSA report. These are actions specifically required by the Board of Trustees and trustees on October 28, 2018 and not inclusive of all employee actions. All university appointments go through an assessment and approval process prior to committee review, which may include personnel and budget committee recommendation, presidential approval, university budget office clearance, and/or compensation analysis by university human resources. The Personnel Matters Report reflects selected ECP actions that have been entered by the colleges into the CUNY system of record between May 9, 2022, and August 26, 2022. The report contains a total of 130 ECP actions, including 34 regular appointments, 29 separations, and 48 interim appointments. Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria is available to provide further background and information as you may require. In the meantime, I'll move approval of item B8. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments on item B8? Hearing none. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you. Item B8 is approved unanimously. Item B9 is a resolution to appoint Catherine Cousins as Vice President of Advancement and Communications at York College effective October 25, 2022, at a salary of $213,000. Catherine Cousins was most recently the Chief Development Officer for Norwalk Community College Foundation, where she worked in partnership with the president and CEO to provide leadership, direction, and coordination for all fundraising and marketing strategies and activities that enable the foundation to support the Norwalk Community College students and faculty. Ms. Cousins has raised and stewarded over $200 million during her 25-plus-year career in development, marketing, and alumni engagement in institutions of higher education, has taught seminars on ethics, fundraising, major gifts, capital campaigns, special events, change management, board development, and leadership. Vice Chancellor Gloria is available to provide further background on this item should you require it or answer any questions. In the meantime, I'll move approval of item B9. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Item B9 is approved unanimously. Item B10 is a resolution to appoint Carmen Huertos Noble as Senior Associate Dean of Clinical Programs at CUNY Law School, effective October 25, 2022, at a salary of $201,586. Carmen Huertos Noble is currently interim Senior Associate Dean of Clinical Programs at CUNY Law School, where she leads a nationally-ranked clinical program, including the tenured and tenure-track faculty members who teach in the clinic, visiting faculty and fellows, administrative staff, and a growing number of full-time and part-time students. She has 20 years of legal progressive social justice experience and pedagogy experience in higher education, having held positions such as adjunct professor at Fordham Law School, CUNY Law School professor, and founding director of the Community and Economic Development Clinic, and senior staff attorney in the Urban Justice Center. Vice Chancellor Gloria is again available to provide further background on this item or answer any questions as you may require. In the meantime, I'll move approval of item B10. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments on item B10? Hearing none. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item B10 is approved unanimously. Thank you. Item B11 is a resolution to appoint Jennifer Jarvis as Vice President of Student Development and Enrollment Management at Queens College, effective October 25, 2022, at a salary of She has been... Jarvis was appointed interim Vice President of Student Development and Enrollment Management at Queens College in December 2021, and was previously Chief Student Affairs Officer at the college, responsible for the entire portfolio of student life and development initiatives. She began her career at Queens College as Assistant Director of Student Life, promoted to Director of the department, then served as Executive Director of the Student Union, Executive Director of Student Development before being promoted to Assistant Vice President of Student Affairs. Again, Vice Chancellor Gloria is available to provide further background or information on this as you may require. In the meantime, I'll move approval of item B11. Is there a second? Item's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments on this? Hearing none. We ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Item B11 is unanimously approved. Item B12 appoints Katura Parker as Vice President of Institutional Advancement at John Jay College, effective October 25, 2022, at a salary of $200,000. Katura Parker served as interim Vice President for Institutional Advancement at John Jay since November 2021, and has more than a decade of higher education philanthropic leadership experience. Under her leadership, the office has exceeded its commitment goal of $3.2 million for fiscal year 2022. As a member of the president's leadership team, Ms. Parker leads and promotes the development and fundraising vision of the college, directs and guides development efforts, including securing major gifts, stewarding major donors, and developing a pipeline for new ones, maintaining productive relationships with John Jay Foundation board members, college faculty, administrative colleagues. Again, Vice President... Vice Chancellor Gloria is available to provide further background or information as you may require. In the meantime, I'll move approval of item B12. May I have a second?
I would be honored to second her.
Let the record reflect that Professor Benton is honored.
She's terrific.
Honored to second that. A great moment. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is unanimous, Professor Benton, undoubtedly because of your unqualified endorsement. And second. Item B13 is to appoint Sanjay Ramdath as Vice President of Enrollment Management at Borough Manhattan Community College, effective October 25, 2022, at a salary of $183,000. Ramdath has been serving as Acting Vice President of Enrollment Management at the Borough Manhattan Community College since June 2021, has been managing BMCCs enrollment services. He has played a pivotal role, leading the development of strategic enrollment management plan aligned to institutional priorities of the college. Mr. Ramdath is... will continue to oversee the offices of registrar admissions, financial aid, one-stop panther station. Maybe you'll explain that. Student Student Scholarship, International Student Recruitment Office, and closely align enrollment management activities with the Office of Public Affairs to design effective marketing and outreach initiatives. Vice Chancellor Gloria is also available to provide further background if needed. In the meantime, I'll move approval of item B13. May I have a second? That was bothering me. I figured that was the mascot. Figured that was the mascot, but nice to know. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Item B13 is approved unanimously. Item B14 is a resolution to appoint Billy Gastek Rosado as Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at LaGuardia Community College, effective October 25, 2022, at a salary of $250,000. Dr. Rosado was previously Associate Dean at the New York University School of Professional Studies, where she led the Center for Applied, excuse me, Liberal Arts, an English Language Institute, and a Division of Applied Undergraduate Studies. Dr. Rosado has over 15 years of experience in academic affairs and higher education, and served on the New York State Professional Standards and Practice Board for teaching, and was the inaugural Chief Research Officer at the Relay Graduate School of Education, and held faculty positions at UMass Boston and Temple University. Dr. Rosado will report directly to the president and be a member of the president's executive cabinet. She will supervise academic affairs related to pre-college and admission programs, and Vice Chancellor Gloria will be available to provide further background and answer questions as you may require. In the meantime, I'll move approval of item B14. May I have a second? Are we ready for a vote, or is there any discussion? We're ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item B14 is approved unanimously. Item B15 is a resolution to appoint Kenneth Torino as Vice President of Finance Administration at CUNY Graduate Center, effective October 25, 2022, at salary of $198,000. Professor Torino, excuse me, Kenneth Torino began serving as Deputy to the Senior Vice President for Finance and Administration at, in September 2019, has been managing CUNY Graduate Center's financial health, financial health planning, and business operations. He'll manage financial operations at the graduate centers, tax levy operations, and graduate centers-related and separately incorporated entities. He'll also track the performance of the endowment and ensure financial compliance. Vice Chancellor Gloria will be available to provide further background and information and answer questions as you may require. In the meantime, I'll move approval of item B15. May I have a second?
Second.
There is a second. Are there any questions or comments?
Working closely with Kenneth Torino at the Graduate Center, in my capacity as co-chair for business of the doctoral and graduate students council, I have to say I strongly support this appointment.
Okay. Glad to hear that. Is there anyone else? Hearing no, no other comment or question, we're ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? This policy item, B15, is approved unanimously. Item B16 is a resolution to authorize BMCC to enter into contract with Capstone On-Campus Management LLC for residential housing for Borough Manhattan Community College students, project administrator, and a residential advisor at the Towers at City College of New York. Trinity Church Wall Street awarded $2 million project grant to BMCC Foundation for the express purpose of providing housing for housing insecure students enrolled at BMCC. BMCC and the foundation intend to utilize Trinity grant funds to secure housing for 40 students and one project administrator and one resident advisor at the Towers at City College of New York. Because of the university's existing relationship relative to the Towers, relative to 2005 management agreement, the university and the foundation have determined that it's in their best interest that the university, on behalf of BMCC, contract directly with EHS to reserve and pay for residential housing beds at the Towers. The university is requesting the Board of Trustees to authorize a payment agreement for the residential housing beds for a term beginning November 1, 2022, through August 18, 2023, for a license fee of $573,439.04, with two renewal options for subsequent consecutive years. University and the foundation intend to enter into a MOU regarding the transfer of the foundation to the university of a portion of the Trinity grant funds and the amount of the license fee. BMCC President Anthony Monroe is available to answer any questions on this item or provide any background as you may require. In the meantime, I'll move to approve. Is there a second? Professor Benton seconds. Are there any questions?
Just to show my appreciation to Trinity Church Wall Street and their philanthropy for this major investment, housing insecurity is one of our biggest challenges, particularly for the community college students, so want to be on the record thanking them for this grant and what we will learn from it, so.
Here, here. Anything else? Thank you, Chancellor. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Item B15 is approved unanimously. I beg your pardon. Item B16 is approved unanimously. Item B17 authorizes procurement of bar exam prep courses and a waiver of tuition and fees for third-year law school students enrolled in such courses at CUNY School of Law. CUNY Law School is seeking to provide, to procure, rather, a bar exam prep course and waive tuition and fees for third-year law school students graduating in February 2023 and May 2023, following the example of other law schools such as Howard University School of Law and the University of Missouri-Kansas, Missouri-Kansas City School, which provide free bar exam prep programs for all their students. Bar exam prep program without cost to students would likely improve bar exam passage rates, influence standing in the national law school rankings, and have a positive influence on enrollment of related tuition revenues, and enhance the reputation of CUNY Law. The dean of the law school, Sudha Sethi, would you mind letting everybody know where you are? Dean?
I don't think she's here.
Okay.
But it's still a good idea.
Someone will be available to provide answers, should you require them. In the meantime, I'll move approval of item B17, because as Professor Benton pointed out, it is a good idea.
I don't even have to be armed to second it.
It is a good idea, and there's a second. Is there any discussion on this? Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Item B17 is unanimously approved, with no more items on the policy calendar. I'll address Section 2 information items. There are two information items on the agenda. Item 2A is the fiscal year 2022 fourth quarter preliminary financial report. Interim Vice Chancellor and CFO Christina Chapo will make the presentation of this report. Christina?
Sure. So I had put together some slides to go with the document, and I think everyone should have that in their onboard materials.
I can put them up. Hang on a second. You have onboard home there, so. But yes, everybody has onboard, so they should be there. You can start, Christina. I'll pull it up while you.
Yeah. So what we're going to present to you and what's in the report was the 2022, we're calling it a preliminary financial report, and it's preliminary at this point because we're not officially closing our books until the end of this month. So while we don't think the numbers will be materially different, we didn't want to wait until the next board meeting, which was November 21, to kind of go through these numbers.
Sorry, this is your report.
Yeah, so it actually is, it's actually, you know, the other document that went with that. It's called 1B. It's the A1B.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go.
So this is a preliminary report as of the expected conclusion of the fourth quarter?
Well, yeah, at the end of June, and it encompasses the full year of activity for fiscal '22.
Okay.
Yeah. So, thank you. So I just want to start. So, you know, 2022, you know, we're going to be ending mostly, you know, in a positive balance by all the colleges, despite really continued financial challenges related to continued public funding reductions, loss of enrollment, and related tuition revenue, increased pandemic costs. And also, which is a little, it's not mentioned here, but I felt like it was worthy to mention, is inflation, which is a little harder to mention, but you could see, you know, some of our costs of items are also going up. Kind of moving on to the next page. Next, on the next page, we're really talking about the projected addition. Again, we're projected to end the year on a balance of $112 million. With this assistance of financial stimulus, all funds, all colleges are ending overall in a positive balance. However, there really does continue to be really very wide variations between the colleges' financial health. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see an overall kind of summary of the total year in numbers. On the left, you'll see the expenses, the campus allocations that amounts outside of the budget, out of allocations, which is really fringe, some building rentals and some energy. The prior year reserve, we ended at 102, and the $131 million really represents the difference between what we projected to revenue target to be and the actual revenue target. And so we usually do those projections in about May, you know, before the year fiscal year ends. And on the right, you'll see what we spend most of the money on. You'll see the PS expenditures and fringe, and the OCPS and some other numbers to get to the balance of $120 million. And if you go on the next page, you'll really see a summary of all the colleges' resources and expenditures, and a couple of things I wanted to point out. So at the bottom here, on the third column, you see we're ending with 112 balance. If you actually looked at page four of your full packet, you'll see that, for the most part, all the reserve balances stay the same, except for some of the graduate schools, because they really don't have federal funds to use anymore. But the good news was, you know, at the third quarter, we had projected they were going to use about $4.8 million of reserves, and at the end of the day, right now, we're projecting them to be much lower at $2.3 million, which is good. The other thing I just wanted to point out was related to City College, so they're the only colleges that really grew their reserve, and that primarily represents medical school. So actually, City College doesn't have a reserve, the full 14.169 actually belongs to medical school. So I just thought that was significant for, to kind of point out here.
Oh, significant in that it was an act of bookkeeping, right?
I'm sorry.
It was an act of bookkeeping. It was moving one account off of City College's budget, right?
Well, I think what happens is the finances of the medical school are kind of kept separate, although they're part of the college. So it really does, you know, it does, again, like, if you wouldn't have known it was the medical school, you would have thought it would have belonged to City College. So that's why I just wanted to point that out, because I thought that was important to know.
Being separated for the first time. I think it's a good thing.
Well, they're separated also because of accreditation purposes that is required. So that's part of the distinction. I mean, it is part of City College, but it needs to be separated for that.
I mean, there's really, most other cases, like, the college is cutra, the college is cutra, this is one case where it actually is a separate because of their accreditation. So, okay, on the next page, we're going to talk a little bit more about federal stimulus funds. The one thing I wanted to mention is that we plan on doing a pretty comprehensive review of the federal stimulus funds at the November meeting. I'm sorry.
So I wanted to ask a question about what was being said about City College in the future. Is there a plan for the School of Medicine to have its own line on the report in addition to the line for City College in order to show a distinction between the reserves for City College versus those of the School of Medicine?
I think we could definitely look into it. I think there's some complications, technical complications, and there's some shared resources between the two. So it's not very clean, but perhaps we could note it in some places, yeah, maybe where it makes sense, you know. All right, so in terms of stimulus funds, like I said, I think we are due to do like a full review, and that's what we're planning to do on November 21 at the next meeting, to kind of give, you know, a look of what we've used the money on, what we have left, and so forth. So that's our plan for the next meeting. This report shows we're using about $293 million of federal stimulus funds to close out the year, and that is for both, for additional expenses, so that's covering both expenses and loss revenue of the colleges. It's pretty close to our projection at quarter three, which was $294, but there has been a little bit of adjustment between senior and community colleges. We're using a little less on the community college level and a little bit more on the senior colleges. So I just want to go to the next slide and talk a little bit about enrollment and tuition revenue. If you compare.
Excuse me, before you go on, before you leave federal funds, they come to an end
They do.
Next year.
Yeah.
Do we know what happens? Do we have an idea or a plan what happens when black ink becomes red ink, in column after column?
Yeah, I think, I think we're tackling it in several ways.
Go ahead, start.
No, I think we're tackling, and it does relate a little bit to enrollment and tuition revenue. One of the things we talked about today was this $40 million plan. If you looked at the elements of the plan, a lot of what we're planning to use the $40 million is going to helping out with our enrollment, our retention. Everything from this market analysis, which was discussed, we're also working, putting some money to ease a transfer between the colleges, we're putting money into online, you know, updating our system. So a lot of what we're planning to use that money, and it's a good timing to get the money, and a lot of this is also a part of our strategic plan. So that's part of, you know, what we're doing is also, you know, I don't know if one of you could talk, but also we but also we got someone from the City Speaker Adams to work on, we got someone for the reconnect program that's looking to, you know, identify students who have left, you know, have some college education but haven't completed a degree to try to bring the Mac to complete their degree. So we're working on some of those angles. And we're also, you know, working, you know, with the colleges, going through their financial plans. We're meeting with all the colleges and to be able to kind of develop a plan for each college on which we have to move forward.
Yeah, and if I could add, Mr. Chairman, we will be, as part of this process, we will be bringing to the board not only our budget request for the new fiscal year, but also what are the different, some different ideas on how we're gonna address some of these challenges sort of going forward. So the November meeting, we will have sort of, we're gonna reconcile where we are and how far the stimulus dollars are gonna take us, but also have some thoughts connected to how to address some of those challenges.
And we should have a plan for going forward in November on the very vexing budget issues that will be presented to us by the expiration of these funds next year, right?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so moving into enrollment and tuition revenue, we are down about 11% between fiscal '21 and '22. You can see here that the largest decreases are at the community colleges, 18%, and then senior colleges were eight, and the graduate and professional schools were 3%. How it translates into dollars, it was a decrease of $136.3 million between the prior year and current year. $72 million related to senior colleges, $62.9 for community colleges, $1.2 for the graduate public schools. I just want to comment that actually also these projections are down about $25 billion from the third quarter report. Most of the projections were lower, and except for Lehman and City College, those were actually, and Queensbar were actually up from that. So a lot of downs that kind of added up to $25 million. Moving on to just a little bit more on tuition enrollment on the next page. Again, big variations between the colleges. The senior colleges, which do include the comprehensive colleges, which offer both associate and bachelor's degrees, I just want to mention, you know, they were down between 1 and 19%, and that translated into $2.2 to $15 million decrease. On the community colleges, again, they were down 11 to 26% between last year and this year, and that translated into losses of 1.1 to $25.8 million. The graduate schools, these percentages look big, but sometimes the dollar values are not big because of their size. They were down, you know, down 15 to increase 12%, and that's, you know, less than a million dollars down, to about a trillion quarters of a million dollars up. Okay, moving on to expenses and staffing. So overall for the year, we're projected to be down, to be up by about 6% in our staffing. Overall, campus expenses, that translates to about $138 million. Overall, that projection's down by about $24 million from the third quarter. Personal service expenses, projections were pretty much on point with quarter three, you know, despite having a lot less staffing. The costs are projected to be up about 2% or $48 million, primarily due to collective bargaining increases. On the OTPS side, you know, we have a projected increase of 40%, $90 million. A lot of that is related to the pandemic costs, right? So colleges are, colleges are in like different positions about using their federal funds, right? So community colleges and the comprehensives, the colleges who are experiencing a lot of revenue loss are using a lot of their funds to cover those losses, while other colleges who are not experiencing as much of a revenue decline, enrollment decline, really have the opportunity to invest those funds. And that contributes to the increase in expenses that you see here. Plus, this is the first year, like, we're fully open, right? You know, if you look at '21, you know, you could see we didn't spend as, we really didn't spend money on food or travel. A lot of those things, we're still, you know, not fully, you know, up to speed where they are now.
If those are federal stimulus dollars, they don't have to be expended by a certain point? Because if not, we wind up losing it all.
Yeah, they have to be spent by June 30th, 2023.
And we'll, I presume, have a plan in place for spending every last dime?
Yeah, they have to be claimed by then, yeah.
Right, and we're leaving it up in the long run. This is up to each college, each campus to be able to determine how the money is expended.
Yeah, I mean, if you.
How are we monitoring on a central basis to ensure that that's occurring?
Well, remember, the board approves the categories of each college for the plan, right?
Yeah.
So in that sense, it's not that they're doing what they're doing. Something that was informed to the board, presented, and then the office of Christina is working with them to make sure that they continue to spend those dollars. So that's within.
We're concerned about making sure that it gets expended.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm concerned about, yeah. I mean, I think what we're, so in November, we'll bring a full plan to show what was spent so far. But also, each colleges is including their federal expenditures as part of their financial plans, and we're meeting with everyone to make sure that they spend every penny. So they have a Plan A and a Plan B. We're also not leaving it to the end. We actually ask colleges to try to spend everything by the third quarter, March 31st, so that we don't have a surprise at the end, right? And that, we don't want to leave any of this money on the table.
Okay.
So absolutely. All right, and then, you know, I'm just gonna skip over the next couple because in the interest of time. If we could just go to full-time staffing. Yeah, thank you. That would be great. So again, I think I mentioned that we were about 857 positions down. And you can see here, the senior colleges were down by 4%. Graduate and professional schools, 1. Community colleges, 5%, and system offices at 4%. And then just the next final slide.
May I, before?
Oh, sure.
So the reduction in staffing is university-wide?
Yeah.
Okay, it's everybody? Colleges, programs, central organs, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
May I, yes. When we pick fall 2020, or FY fall 2020 as our baseline, we're choosing a time after the pandemic had already started. If you choose fall 2019, I haven't looked at the total, but I've looked at faculty, and we've lost 373 lines of faculty since fall 19, while we're trying, because of the support of the state, to add $53 million of new faculty to achieve 584 new positions. And I know we can't have a collapse of enrollment revenues and not have a consequence. But I'm concerned that there are nine campuses that have lost more since fall 19 than they're projected to get from the $53 million. And I'm concerned about how we can maximize the benefit of the $153 million initiative while somehow recovering. And it seems to me some of the campuses are able to do it. Some of the campuses are able to do it quite well at community colleges and senior colleges, and others are not. And I think it's really something to look at because when we report in September of 2023 what we accomplished, it would be good to show as much of an accomplishment as possible.
Were you expecting a response?
No. I'm not expecting a response tonight, but I, and this isn't the first time I've raised this. But I would like to see us study what each campus is doing and seeing if every campus is doing the best that they can.
The one thing that I'll add to that is that luckily, we're proactive, right? In a different setting, the, I don't know, it's 255, 53 positions that we hired this year, right? If we had not put those searches in place, right, in anticipation of the support from the governor for the lines, we would have delayed one year in getting them. So in that sense, you know, we didn't, we didn't want to be more aggressive than that because, you know, you have to be prudent in that sense. But I think that I'm very pleased that we were able to be proactive in that sense and at least have all that support, you know, from the governor. We were able to sort of have it immediately to be there at the beginning of this year.
Yeah, but that doesn't change the comparison between fall 2019 and now and what we would project to be, taking into consideration all 584 positions. And that's where I just hope we can do the best we can because it was fabulous what the leadership of the state did to allocate those funds. And I just want to see us do the absolute best we can with them.
Yeah, so does that.
I agree.
Okay, anyone else?
And just on the last slide, I just wanted to talk a little bit about how, you know, some of the budget from the CNC are gonna impact next year, right? So what Ned alluded to is we received $53 million in faculty funds, and that went to both the senior and the community colleges. We also just approved here a $40 million plan. One time strategic funds that we received, we got, you know, just almost $60 million for the TAP gap, which is really gonna help the colleges quite a bit in the operating funds. And also received funding for fringe and then a new part-time TAP program. So all that's gonna help to shape, you know, how we are in. And that, all those things help fiscal '23 is kind of my point I wanted to make. On the city side, we also received money for mandatory costs, collective bargaining for the colleges, fringe benefits, energy building rentals. We received most of our pandemic-related, they call it a pegged really cut, but we are, you know, with $14.6 million going into this fiscal year of pandemic-related decreases in funding. And then recently, it was announced that all city agencies were expected to reduce their city funding expenditures by 3% for fiscal '20, '23, and that increases to 4.75 in fiscal '24 and out years. So we already have kind of that looming. You know, we're still, you know, working with the city on that. But that's just something that I just wanted to mention as well.
Vice Chairman has a question?
I'm sorry, what's the value of the city's reduction?
13.7 and 19.5.
The new, the one that proposed?
Yeah, in addition to the 14.6.
Did they ever restore?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the 14.6 stands.
Yep.
And then 3% value adds 13.7.
13.7 on top.
On top of that.
So the total reduction from the city is how much? Why you'd have to add in?
I would have to do that quickly.
But just, so you have it, so they never restored? It's just because you're chasing your tail. When the state adds money and then the city's reducing on one end, it takes away the value of the restoration. So the city's reduction, the remaining reduction is important.
The most benign, benign.
Yeah.
That's me being diplomatic. The value of the outstanding one is 14?
Yeah, so it's about $28 million. I just did a quick low.
Okay.
About $28 million for '23.
So 15 has never been restored, and now there's another 13, roughly, potentially.
Yeah.
And then there's a, and.
And that moves up to like 19.5.
And then it moves up to 14. Okay, thank you.
Sure. And that was the last.
Is there anything else on this?
Thank you, Gal.
Are we ready for the next information item?
Can I ask one question?
Good.
So what is the difference in the current city allocation to the year before and the years before? Has it gone down?
And that's the 14 number, I think. So they, I think it was originally like a, was it like a $60 million reduction? I think they took.
And then went up to 70, yeah.
And then they restored some of that, which left this like $14 million hole.
Kelly, I mean, I'm not very, I'm not very happy about it, you know, frankly. City Council and a mayor who is very friendly, and they should be friendlier. It's on the record, Mr. Thompson.
I'm not the chair.
But that's noted.
Nobody's.
Anyone else? Thank you, trustee. Are we ready for the next information item? Who's presenting it?
Oh, this is just, oh, well, this is, this is just an information report where we report any, you know, waivers or any new small fees. And these are two, these are, you know, both Sat and Al and Lehman have a relationship with several unions, and they provide specific programs in return. There's a waiver of tuition fees.
Other than that, nothing remarkable in any of these two?
No.
Okay.
These are pretty routine.
Are we ready for the final information report?
Which is the committee charter. And as you know, it's our first meeting under the new charter. And the subcommittees will be meeting next month. So the subcommittees will sit and address their own charters to get to your issue, Professor Penn. And so this has been provided for everybody's information. And if you have any questions or comments, just you can send them through to the secretary's office, and we're happy to take them on and leave it open to the committee. We're not voting today on anything.
I just wanted to, excuse me, to clarify, and this is what you and I spoke about earlier, Gal. With respect to Article Two composition, it addresses the committee will consist of at least three and no more than five members who shall be appointed. And I just wanted to confirm or clarify that that is exclusive of the faculty and student representative.
As ex officios, that's correct.
As well as voting members.
As voting members, but we did not include you because of your ex officio capacity. But if, that's something that we can change in all the charters. In fact, the Audit and Governance Charter reads the same way, but we're happy for that.
I just wanted to clarify on the record that.
Does not take away your vote.
Exactly, thank you.
Okay, are we good on this? Are we ready for a motion to adjourn?
Salute with all.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you.